Discussing an item that will be on the agenda later. And I reopen this meeting. Per Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. But it can be viewed normally live on channel 14 and a recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube. Let's stand for the pledge. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising a hand icon on your screen. And I will notify the public per the Massachusetts Public Meeting laws. Do we have anyone who's making a recording tonight? I see one. Hi, Mackenzie. Thank you very much.
Mission and vision, Kelly.
The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. And our vision is that Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Kelly. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can be submitted by email to Do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none. First item on our agenda is the Student Advisory Report. And Teagan. Hi, Teagan.
Hi. Okay, so my name is Teagan Lynn. As some of you may know from my last meeting, I'm a sophomore at Falmouth High School. So we have some more updates. We had the college fair last week and all the juniors and seniors were able to attend and really enjoyed it. Many students were successful in talking to the college of interests and also getting some more information as well as interacting with some new colleges. We also are conducting our student government elections this week. With sports, the senior nights are starting to happen. There's a big graduating class of seniors. And so far, the girls' field hockey team celebrated 11 seniors. The soccer team also celebrated 11 seniors and the girls' volleyball team had 10 seniors. The fall sports are finishing up in the next couple of weeks and everyone has had a blast with the teams and seasons. Both volleyball and field hockey teams have made it into the tournament and are continuing on their season. The girls' field hockey is third in the state, which is amazing. Mr. Edwards, Mr. Jost, and other substitute teachers have done an amazing job with the band while looking for a replacement for Ms. Peer, and they have finally found one. The music program has hired a new teacher, Ms. Wheeler, and she is lovely and the students in the program have taken a liking to her. She's a great teacher. Everyone has developed a routine for school. We have another home football game this Friday and everyone is excited and looking forward to it. And they are also having step up night, which is super cool for the marching band and students from Lawrence will get to play with them during the game. The first quarter is almost complete and the progress report have started to come out.
Thank you so much, Teagan. Are there any questions for Teagan? Thank you, Teagan. How's your ankle? Last time we saw you, you had an injury. How are you doing?
It's getting better. I'm doing physical therapy and I have to wear like a brace, but I think I have like three more weeks and then I can start trying to get back into sports.
That's awesome. Okay, great. Are you going to prom? Did you get asked for prom?
No. I'm a little too young. That's like a teenage age.
That's great. Awesome. Thank you so much, Teagan. We always enjoy seeing you. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Next on our agenda is to act on memorandum of agreements with FEA units A, B, C, and D. So again, thank you for the robust conversation during our executive session. And as mentioned, this MOA is being brought to the school committee for a vote because it includes stipends for FEA members and the committee needs to approve the use of funds. The stipends are being offered because the district recognizes that staff are experiencing unique COVID-related responsibilities that may result in staff working outside their contractual hours. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with FEA units A, B, C, and D? I'll make a motion to approve the MOA with FEA units A, B, C, and D with one edit. Yes, I was gonna say with one edit on the third. Yeah, second page. Actually, do you have this thing? Yes, so second page. Item D under additional staff. The first line should read full-time COVID nurse coordinator and not leader. Perfect. So the motion with the A motion with one edit to change the word leader to coordinator. And is there a second? A second. And second by Leah. A roll call vote. Andrea, we'll start with you since we're on Zoom.
Andrew Atharold, yes.
Bill Ryder.
No.
Terry. Erin Meders, no. Lisa. Lisa Hart, yes. Welch, yes. Melissa Keef, no. Leah Palmer, yes.
William Dorfner, yes. Or no, excuse me.
So William Dorfner. Okay, so thank you. So a vote five to four. Oh, sorry, and me. It's like I knew my response in my head. Natalie Canoplis, yes. So with the vote to five to four, the MOA passes with the edit. And thank you all again for your thoughtful feedback. Next, act on Waterville ski trip on January 9th, 2022. Ryan, can you promote Mike Campbell, please?
Anyone else?
No, just one. This photo is appropriate. That's great. That's not what it go about.
Everybody.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce stuff? Okay, yes. So Mike, I'm gonna, this is Mike Campbell. He's a teacher at our high school and he has submitted a field trip request. And Mike, I'm just gonna turn over to you to tell us a little bit about this trip.
Yeah, sure. The plan is to take a trip up to Waterville Valley, leaving Falmouth High School at 6:00 AM on a Sunday and then leaving Waterville Valley at 3:00 PM. And that would get us back at Falmouth High School by 6:00 PM. And the plans to take a coach bus up. I'm expecting, I think I got about a, I have 120 kids who have expressed interest in the high school and I'm expecting at least 30 to make the numbers work. However, we could accommodate 50 students.
Hey, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mike? Leah. I just have a question about, it says transportation in contact with Greg Kennedy. Isn't he retired? In the interim. What is his retirement for next year? Not for today. Okay, okay. So he's still here. He is still with us this school year. Okay, great. That was, that was my only question. Kelly. Two quick things. One, I'm so happy to see field trip requests coming in because it's just another, you know, way that we're getting back to normal. And I'm wondering, Mr. Campbell, if you thought about, you know, even doing this more often. It's just such a great opportunity for kids to do something that they might not normally have access to. I know it's expensive, but for a family to go, it's far more expensive. So I'm just wondering if you've thought about having maybe a club or something that's a little bit more regular, if this is
Yeah, so this is my fourth year here in Falmouth. But before that, I was eight years in Taunton and I ran an outing club in Taunton. And we probably took, you know, probably about over 100 trips. A lot of ski trips, whitewater rafting, rock climbing, kind of a lot of, you know, atypical activities. I kind of tried to create a club that I would have liked to join when I was a student. So the plan is, you know, if the interest is there, then the plan is to, you know, meet that demand and I'm happy to do it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other, I do have some other questions. Sorry. Is there a scholarship option for this?
We haven't talked about that. In Taunton, when I did run the club and it was, you know, a few years in, and the club had developed a little bit of an account, we did, we did offer scholarships for students who are interested. I think it's definitely something that we could collaborate with. Is it FEE? Who is?
The asset, yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, I think it's, it's not something I thought about for this first trip, but it's definitely something I, I plan on doing for the future.
And let me sure that the school committee that we offer scholarships for almost everything we do. And so we would support scholarships for students.
First of all, as a former youth director taking kids on ski trips, bless your heart for putting this thing together. And I know you said you had 130 that showed interest. And I know that from experience, there's always way more that say, yeah, I'll go that actually sign up. How, if, you know, say there were 60 kids that were interested, how does it determine who the first 50 are that get to go?
It would have. So what I've done so far is I've created a club on Schoologee and sent out a form to get a little interest from the students. And I let them know on that form that, you know, I'm gonna, at some point, create permission slips and it's gonna be a first come, first served. And so I think that's probably the fairest way to do it. Everyone's aware of the date, the potential date and, and that, you know, it's first come, first served. So hopefully once they make the announcement, everyone who wants to do it gets to do it.
Thank you.
Bill Ryder.
Michael, I also like the fact that you indicated the special considerations and the COVID protocols. I think that's really important in today's world and I think that needs to be mentioned. Thank you.
They'll be dressed for it at the boss.
I was just gonna say, I work up at Loon on the weekends and just kind of aware of a lot of the changes that they had to go through last year to accommodate skiers. And I'm sure some of those changes are gonna hold over to this year.
Any other questions or comments for Michael?
Could I just say thank you too because I took kids on a ski thing once and somebody swore they were Black Diamond and they really didn't even meet green circles. No, it is a lot of responsibility and thank you very much.
Yeah, one of the things that Waterville offers are lessons. So it's definitely gonna be something on the permission slip that I let, make parents aware. You know, like, you know, let's, you know, be honest about your child's skiing ability. And if they need lessons, I think that I have the price right here. For a two-hour lesson, it was $45. So that's gonna be an option for students. And I, you know, when we used to go up to Waterville a lot, I always strongly encourage students to do the lessons because you just do a lesson for a little bit, get you comfortable on the mound, and then you can jump right back with your friends.
Great suggestions. Awesome. Any other questions or comments? Seeing that, is there a motion to approve the Waterville Valley ski trip on January 9th, 2022? So a Dorfner makes motion seconded by Terry. And roll call vote. Andrea, we'll start with you.
Andrew Atharold, yes.
Ryder, yes.
Terry Meders, yes. Lisa Hart, yes. Welch, yes. Melissa Keef, yes. Leah Palmer, yes.
Phil Dorfner, yes.
And I am also an E, yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you so much for doing this. I hope you have a wonderful and safe trip. Thanks, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, too. Thank you. Next presentation of MCAS.
Good evening. Thank you. It's hard to follow this ski trip. I've gotten excited about the possibility of getting out there and that's a good way to embrace the winter weather. I'm gonna move us into presentation mode. All right. Can everybody see the slides? Okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. So as we go into this, we certainly know that it was a surreal year. And I think that's the easiest way, right? Like we took a little bit of what we knew and a lot of what we weren't sure about and put it together to find our way through the school year. I want to share my admiration both for our colleagues across the district, our teachers who are committed to making the absolute best out of those surreal circumstances and our families and our students. Because it's clear in the data that despite shifts and changes, our students have core skills, but they were affected by the circumstances in which we found ourselves. And they also had, albeit a shortened but slightly redesigned test. And they heard the message about reduced assessment pressure and taking the time to do the best that they could. And so that's what I'm gonna share with you this evening is that information. So I'm gonna begin as we do each fall when we report out scores by looking at English Language Arts. And I'm trying to give you the comparison points that we presented in previous years as well. So the first we have here is looking across the grade, starting with third grade on the left across to 10th grade on the right. This is the percentage of students who are meeting and exceeding expectations. So what you see is the Falmouth Public Schools data by grade level in the maroon with the white label. And then in the more pale, almost like pinkish color is the comparison. It's the state cohort at the same grade level for the English Language Arts test. In many instances, there was a decline in the overall number of students or percentage, excuse me, of students meeting and exceeding expectations. That's across the Commonwealth as well as in the district. However, we did have a couple of grade level cohorts that actually increased their percentages in Falmouth of meeting and exceeding expectations. The first is at grade three and they increased by three. At grade seven, we increased by eight. And as we go up, we saw an increase in grades eight as well. So when we look at the overall grade three through eight in ELA and looking at our students' reading comprehension and writing skills, we see significant improvement in some areas and then comparing across. Here is just another way of looking at the same information. And this is isolating grades three through eight. Sorry, my slides are advancing, but I'm not touching buttons. Okay. Grades three through eight, English Language Arts. Here's a way of taking the aggregate which you saw in the slim bars and carrying that as a compressed composite, looking at all grades together, represented in all students. And then looking at it by the three student identification groupings that we commonly look at in our data. There are other student identified groupings for our students, including English learners, and then also looking at our students by race and ethnicity. But those numbers are suppressed from the public data because there are fewer numbers in membership and it makes the data potentially identifiable. So these are the three by which we most commonly talk in our public reporting. And so I wanted to bring them forward. So one that I would like to call out, you can see our performance against the state. And you can see that we have, for our students with disabilities, we have a comparable achievement to the state. And we do know that much of our learning also through socialization was impacted when we weren't in small groups and pairs. But when we persist through our curriculum and we look at our students when they're moving towards their high school tests and earning their competency determinations, this same group of students, so I've advanced to looking at grade 10. In 2019, no student earned an exceeding expectations score in ELA at grade 10. And we saw that group move up to 20% of our test takers who identify with disabilities. So there's a, you know, when you look at the separation from being flat with the state performance in grades three through eight and you see that growth, that persistence and staying steadfast with the support that they're provided in their school environments and classrooms is important to look at. And then again, the performance against the state, looking both at the aggregate and the student groupings. So looking at achievement is one way of looking at our data. Another way of looking at our data is to look at growth. And being a historically high-performing district, where we are typically around 97% or 98% of our students when we're isolating grade 10 and we're well, well into the 80s and in some cases the low 90s when we look at our other grades for meeting and exceeding expectation. Knowing that there's a decline across the Commonwealth as students were going through this assessment series, we do see a relationship to growth. In the grades seven and eight columns, our students are between two and four points from achieving moderate growth. So they're still achieving at high levels and the growth will come along with that as they continue through the grades. The growth is also made by compares, comparing two years of MCAS performance. And for the students reported in this year's growth, that last comparison point was 2019, which was a highly celebrated MCAS administration for the number of gains we had made, but it certainly raised the ceiling for us. And this is looking at all grades and again, keeping the same student groupings. And then here's just another way, taking it out of the context of the district alone and looking at it against the state and seeing grade 10, we see that we are a much closer margin with the state, one point above us in the growth. Again, if we were to go back a few slides and compare to the achievement, the dynamic is very different. But isolating the growth just tells the second part of the story against the achievement. And this is reporting the average growth at the grade levels. Of course, following a conversation about ELA, we move into looking at mathematics and we're going to make the same types of comparisons. So here we are, we're looking at grades three through 10 and looking at the grade level aggregate. The grade eight math test is the one place where we didn't outperform the state. It's also one of the areas we saw our sharpest shift from the 2019 MCAS administration. And, you know, we've worked to trace backwards and try to identify variables that impact this. And I think, you know, there are so many variables. Some were the shortened length of our school year and decisions to prioritize some standards over others. But also looking at the impact of the schedule design. Students who may have been exclusively instructed through virtual access and students in the hybrid schedule of being in one week and out one week and being at a unique point in their, in their lives where they may have also been home and forging through their independence for the first time. So it's hard to isolate any one variable. But one of the things that we are doing is trying to isolate the standards and looking at the achievement analysis and drilling into the standards. And the seventh and eighth grade curriculum is also where we have the acceleration point of both grade level and advanced in mathematics. So we're trying to understand the relationship there. But on the whole, you can see that the trend is still outperforming against the state. And in mathematics, the state saw a decline at grade five and we actually saw a 3% increase in our students who were meeting and exceeding over the 2019 school year. And the margin between Falmouth and the state increased by several percentage points in the different grades surrounding grade five. Again, then taking the aggregate and looking at the performance, this was the same number for ELA for students with disabilities, both in the district and the state. And recognizing that this is a composite and isolating out the grade eight scores is part of the impact here in both the aggregate and our other two student groupings. We do see increase over the state. We saw a few percentage points of increase in this gap widening here from the previous administration. And again, taking an opportunity to look at grade 10, we can see that similar to ELA, there is widening here in our students who are persisting with us and staying the course, earning their competency determinations and pulling ahead of the state performance level. So we have a similar view of seeing the achievement against the growth. And at grade 10, looking at the students earning their competency determinations, their achievement levels remained high. Their growth, again, being compared against their assessment administration two years ago, they are in the mid-range for low growth. And then just looking at it again in comparison to the state. The state saw a sharp increase in average student growth percentile at grade 10. Despite outperforming an achievement, this is the trend when it comes to the growth measure. But significantly by nearly 50% in fifth grade. So historically as well, if you looked at previous reports, we first report growth in grade four. But because our current fifth graders didn't take their first test, their first MCAS administration until last year, we couldn't report at grade four for grade four test takers because they didn't have multiple years. So grade five is the first growth report. And then I also want to bring forward information around achievement for our science, technology, and engineering tests at grades five, eight, and nine for us in biology. There is no growth measure here, so this is looking at the aggregate in each grade. And I apologize, I can update you with the label markers. They didn't come through on this slide. And then looking, excuse me, I think I clicked, may have clicked twice here. Didn't mean to. There we go. And then this is looking at the same achievement information, grades five and eight as a composite, bringing the two scores together is how Desi publicly reports them and looking at the separation between our achievement in each of these student groupings in the state. So when we look at our story as a whole, there are key points to pull forward. One is looking at the trends among achievement and growth. As I shared earlier in the presentation, Falmouth has been a historically high-achieving MCAS district. And what that means is achievement scores for us have held at very high numbers. And recognizing the COVID impact, we've shifted in some areas the number of students meeting and exceeding expectations declined, similar to the story across Massachusetts. However, we do continue to achieve at higher levels than the state in surrounding communities. Our MCAS data is a snapshot of a moment in time. The common benchmark assessments that we engage in periodically over the course of the year to measure students' achievement around particular standards and isolated skills is really the scrapbook. When we pull out of the MCAS data-featured snapshots within our MCAS administration for this past spring, one of the greatest success stories that I shared with you earlier is grade 10 ELA students with disabilities showed the greatest gains. Previously, for meeting and exceeding combined in the 2019 administration, it was 20%. This time it was 50. Previously, there were no students exceeding. In this time, it was 20% students exceeding expectations. And then with regard to achievement, across all of the grade level tests in all subjects tested, Falmouth outperformed the state in all but one. And our teachers and students are truly resilient. So borrowing from our vision of the graduate in looking at the Clipper acronym, our resilient is our R in being Clipper. Their relationships and trust in each other are essential to the success and the continued plans for growth that we're sharing with you this evening in our data.
Could I make a comment about this particular slide? Sure. One thing I think, Sonia, that's really great. It says we're a high-achieving MCAS district and we're higher than the state and that's good. But the surrounding communities, that to me is good because they're economically and other related factors. Because they're economically and other related factors close to us, right? So we're better, if we're higher than them, that's even better than just the state. Because there aren't some tough low achieving districts included in the state averages.
Yes.
So what I'm trying to say is I think it's, we're even better than the state. Uh, compared to the state, we're even better compared to other things.
Thank you, Terry. And one of the things that we were cautioned against was making too many comparisons. To our own data in previous years as well as to um data from surrounding communities. However, that said, I think to help put the data in context, being able to look at some of the others and and. Try and determine whether the shifts in our data were anomalies or not was really helpful. So thank you for pointing that out. Um, but that's why it, I didn't bring it forward in the slides, I used it to help us understand um where we stood in the greater trend line. Thank you, Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving forward.
Yes, moving forward, yes, thank you.
Okay, I can't see any of you, so thank you. Um, instruction, uh, so our continued journey uh towards increasingly relevant and personalized instruction continues to support a shifts. A shift in students' independent navigation through their learning process, which is one of the variables that was hard for us to trace. But certainly something that we understand when we think about the lived experience of the past year and a half of our students. Um, so we continue to support uh ways to 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 wrap around students in their learning process through our professional development and learning. The availability of instructional tools and the resources that we provide. Shifts in instruction um are captured in our data, right? That's that difficulty in trying to isolate any one variable. But it's also um parallel with students' um own development and then the mindset that they have around learning. We remain committed to continued facilitation of our professional development for all educators. And how to continue to use data effectively and specifically to inform instructional choices. And as I said, it goes beyond just the snapshot of what we have here and looking at all data that's available to us. And so continuing to build off of the Clipper identity, just as we demonstrate the R. Uh, as we move through the world of instruction, we also capitalize on the L, which is the learner. Um, in our framework for being a Clipper, as our students gain proficiency with their skills and knowledge. And so the final piece in um the data that we want to call out and a story that we're trying to tell. Is talking about forward momentum. So we continue to capitalize on lessons learned about um. How students can learn anytime, anywhere and they're they're beginning to find uh themselves in other learning environments. Through the use of digital tools, but also we added in um the engagement in outdoor learning. We continue to evaluate our instructional leadership design and are grateful to welcome, as we share our data with you. Our new math department head who actually officially began as a Clipper yesterday. Um, we continue to support our students' socialization of learning um as we've returned to partner work and small group work. And we're not uh limited by the physical distancing restrictions. But also introducing um just as as you were commending Mike for the opportunity to get out on the ski trip. Um, we're reintroducing field trips and other unique learning experiences. Uh, we've heard some great stories about the students on the um. Boat out to Pennakese and the sea spray and just the experience um that they've had uh along the way. So getting back to that that work, the fun stuff and learning. Um, and finally, as we've demonstrated the R and the L, our learning also capitalizes on the two Ps and the Clipper identity. Making sure that our students see themselves first as participants and later as partners as they collaborate in their learning. And that brings us through to the conclusion of the presentation and I'm going to release the slide so I can see you and respond to questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much for that, Leah. Um, so my my question is actually kind of targeted to to third grade. You know, Sonia, how third graders compared to two years ago? Is it, is it a pretty similar comparison of um meeting or exceeding?
I would need to look at the, I didn't bring the two thousand and nineteen data up in front of me. I think if you don't mind, that's something to which I can respond to you um after I have a chance to call that up.
So the the reason why I'm asking that that question is because there were, there are some things that were in place last year with MCAS that we haven't had before. A shorter test, which is really nice, especially for our younger students.
Hmm.
Um, we had students who were getting very familiar with technology. So for third graders, typically when they go on to that test, that might be kind of the first time they're navigating something like that. But with the comfort level, that might have supported some of that piece and um thinking that our third graders were in person last year. So um that, you know, so I would like to think that maybe our scores would be pretty comparable. But I I did really appreciate the shorter test last year um as more of a snapshot. And which is exactly what it is um in taking, giving us more time for instruction, less time for. Great, um Andrea, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. Um, so Sonia, I, I think that it's pretty challenging. When um we're presenting the information on growth, um, and I think you were explaining um it. It very well in terms of how that relates to achievements. And I guess I'm just, I I'm thinking through if there's another way to visualize these data. Because as our achievement increases and more and more of our students are moving into those meeting and exceeding expectations. Is it true that it's more difficult to get higher growth scores at that point, the way they're calculated?
Yes.
So, so in that case, we might want to look more at growth over time, so we see our trajectory. And how that that, you know, at some point it is going to start to level out, right? Um, a- as long as achievement is continuing to increase like it has been.
Yes, in, if I, if I may add to that, because if I'm following what you're saying, we actually looked at that a couple of years ago. Without COVID um in place and because some of the tests also. For example, math, right, looking at algebra one, algebra two and geometry and sort of isolating that and not going beyond. Our students may have grown beyond, but the capture, we're not capturing some of the other learning that they're doing, you know, moving into to trig. But yes, I understand what you're saying. And there's also a scatter plot we can look at that connects achievement and growth and kind of plots them in the four quadrants. So I will um look at that as well, but yes, it does over time, if you continue to achieve and move your achievement up, your growth actually. Is much harder to bring forward.
Yes, because I just want to make sure that that we can help everyone to have a a more robust understanding of what that means. So that it doesn't look like you're seeing these low numbers and that it that it's indicating that there's a lack somewhere.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, any other questions or comments for Dr. Turner?
And I want to thank Andrew for bringing that up too, because when you're, when you're up at a certain point, you can only go up so high. Actually, books are going to catch up because there's nowhere to go. Um, so that's, that's always a plus. Um, when we were looking at grades uh three through ten mathematics, achievement and growth. Um, looking at the eighth grade scores, you had made the comment um that some of those eighth graders. Um, might have been at home alone or independent for the first time uh during this period while we were doing remote learning. Um. Is is that your feeling that um, you know, specifically kids in that age group? Um, need to be in an in-person classroom?
I think the issue is more when we were trying to isolate variables and talking with educators and and other administrators. As they were trying to isolate things within like their curriculum or instructional design, they said, oh, but we also have to remember. They may have been home for the first time and so we were just trying to isolate any one or two variables and found it really hard to do. So I don't know that it's an advocacy of one model or another, it was just trying to understand um what the experience was. For our students over the past eighteen months or so.
Sure, yeah, I'm sure there's like a whole ton of different independent variables that could be thrown at that, but that would be certainly a a unique. Kind of situation for that age group, that those eighth graders are probably the ones who are just now getting old enough for parents to leave at home, is that common what you're hearing?
It's one of our, it's one of our wonderings and just not knowing whether or not it had an impact and really being able to to measure it. We didn't have a a means for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Sonia?
Okay, seeing then, thank you so much for sharing this data with us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is an update by the superintendent.
Thank you. So, uh, last uh school committee uh meeting, there were two requests for some information. Uh, so I just thought that I would start with those uh for uh the update. Um, so Bill, you had asked about the food service um uh status and um the struggles that we we may be having. I'm going to ask Patrick at this time to address that.
Bill, so Bill, here's the, the, the good news is that uh all children are are still being fed. The bad news is the uh supply chain issues for school um. Food service operations are uh still problematic uh across Cape Cod, across Massachusetts. And if you've uh paid attention to the New York Times, there was even an article in the New York Times that mentioned, mentioned it. So um, uh, if anyone sees Andrea Burns, our food service director in town. Uh, just give her a pat on the back, say we're rooting for her because she's doing a fantastic job trying to mix and match and get things done. But her ability to uh proactively stick to a menu is uh is ba- next to impossible. So we'll stay, keep you up to date with that, uh, but I can't give you any uh. Any news that suggests this is going to get uh better sooner.
Do you have any questions, Bill?
Yeah, I I just really appreciate the updates because any reading that you do is obviously there's concerns with getting food for everybody. There's backups and there's really, I know in the educational world, we're trying to federally take care of all kids with meals. And now it becomes, we're just trying to take care of kids. And I think that's great that our district is. Playing uh magician because there are certain things that you can't get. And I appreciate all the efforts that the food service is doing and taking care of kids. And I think that everybody really needs to realize that. So thank you for that update, appreciate it very much.
Absolutely, thank you for that. Um, doctor.
Yeah, so the second request was, um, how does the uh, how do the schools actually um do placement of students? Uh, you know, uh, after year. And so I think it's probably pretty typical uh as anywhere. Um, the current teachers take a look at their students, uh, look at the academic achievement and growth. And as well as the uh social aspects um of the students and then uh recommends. Uh, certain uh things to look at um for the uh the placement. There is um, the teachers do have a a say in that piece. And then there are um administrative teams of people then uh that actually takes the next steps of uh making placements. In addition to that, um, although we uh do not take uh parent requests for um certain teachers. Uh, there is a form that parents fill out um that um ask certain questions. And you can, you know, explain things um considerations uh to be made uh as far as um their child. So all of that's taken into consideration. We do have a uh process in place for the fourth grade teachers um to have an opportunity to talk with. Um, the administrators at the uh fifth grade level at Moore's Pond. And then uh sixth grade um teachers talking with um uh administration at uh Lawrence. And so forth. So in the transition years, uh, we have built in um time for that same process, even though we're moving from school to school. So that's generally um the process.
Is there any policy or procedure in place? Has there been any memorandum sent out? Any communication with the principals, teachers? Strictly stating that preferential placement will not be given to. School employees, anybody affiliated, anything like that?
I do not think there's any policy and there's not been any directive. That there has been, there's always discussion about how to do placements for students, but there's not been a directive.
Do you feel it would be helpful to have a policy or procedure or at least a memorandum in place to make sure that that doesn't happen?
So if there is um a a request for a policy, it would go to the school committee, uh, subcommittee policy um for that. So I um, I stated before, if that's something that you're looking toward, I would just make the request to the the school. For that policy.
I'd like to go ahead and make a request to the school.
That's good, we haven't had much to do lately.
Um, so two, two things, um, since I don't, I'm not on policy, just, you know. My, my concern would be that we are careful to stay like in our lane, you know, with with policy. Because it sounds like a sort of a management thing to me, but um, that being said, I just wanted to update the committee too, that the, what are we called? Yeah, um, what's our code called? Goal two, do we have a name? I mean, we're the equity group for the goal two. Um, and we did meet and one of the things that we talked about was whether or not we could. Um, whether that would be appropriate in as part of our goal, I'm going to bot, I'm going to botch this up and then you can try to fix what I'm trying to say. Um, appropriate for that goal to also include um looking at placement and achievement. Like, do we have um, do we have equity in students that are placed with teachers without professional status? Who may not be our most, you know, they're not our most experienced teachers and and whether or not that's something that we need to look at. So we started conversations about that in um in our goal two conversation.
Really good.
It was okay?
Can I, can I add to that?
Please.
One other um piece we talked about, because we did, we were talking about placement equity. Um, and also, do you, or is there a procedure for um student feedback in the process? And and we thought, you know, that might build in a level of equity and access to 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 the level.
Great suggestion, I will, um, I can't actually say if there is or isn't, um, but I will certainly talk to the principals um and and do that consideration. We always like the student voice and um their learning, so.
Yeah, what we were kicking around was, you know, not necessarily saying, you know, who are you friends with? As much as who would be a a student for you to be in class with that would raise you up, you know, that would. Would support your learning or or something along those lines, but it's not always just about, it is important for them to have friends in class. I I totally believe that, but it's also important for kids to recognize that there are kids that help them do better.
And that is one of the questions from the teachers moving forward, but it would be great to ask the students.
Yeah.
Right, that's a discussion that teachers notice.
Yeah.
You know, that that we want the students to have other students, of course.
Yeah.
But I do like the student input.
Awesome. Um, I love the idea of uh asking students and getting their voice in there. And I also want to recognize that having peers uh around you that make you want to be your best self. And um intentionally or unintentionally, it just happens organically, you know. I, I saw in elementary school with my own children, there were groups of kids that really encouraged my own kids. To be their best selves and when, you know, years go by, you're with the same kind of group. And then maybe that part of that group gets broken apart, there's a little bit of, oh, that was really good for my kid. But I, then there's other people that come along and it just, I don't know, I really think that it promotes a um. Not just of like the core handful that I'm going to use. Um, you know, one child, the core handful that helps my one child. It then turns into, it's almost like a um, like a Dumbo's feather, you know, like. They did so well with this group and then they were a little bit nervous that, gosh, I'm not with these five eight kids. But I really kind of didn't need him after all, you know, like I've, I've maybe, now maybe I'm supporting somebody, I don't know, I just, I feel like I'm rambling. But I I love the whole student voice and I love the encouragement of be your best self. And like I said, whether it's organically that happens or um, you know, teachers see it and foster it, I appreciate it.
Here's my issue, first, second, third grader doesn't know what's best for their education, but parents are specifically. First, second, third grader doesn't know what's best for their education, but parents are specifically asked. Not to request certain teacher. Yet I've seen it and I've heard about it from the community that certain classes. End up with a very large number of people who are affiliated with the school. That doesn't happen by pure chance. And what I'm asking for is for a policy, procedure or memorandum to be put in place. Where that is told, that's not going to happen. If we want to, i- if if we're in our lane as a committee to talk about equity in our schools, then this is exactly in our lane. That every kid gets the same chance at a high quality education as everybody else's kid, no matter who their parents work for or who they are. That's equity. And if talking about equity is in our lane, then this topic is in our lane. So we can't ignore it. That's what I'm asking.
Andrea, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you. I I I'm trying to figure out where to go with this. What what Kelly was saying earlier when she was conveying our discussion with goal number two. I think there are specific things that we can look at in regards to, like, for example, the professional status, right? And make sure that we're not disproportionately putting certain students with teachers who are newer to the process. But that said, I think this idea, I I bristle at the idea of preferential treatments. Because and in using that language, because we have such a huge number of really excellent staff. In our district. And, you know, what might seem like, you know, you you hear the the parent gossip more about this teacher or that team or whatever. And you you come to find that that's not necessarily the right match for your child. And so I really do trust the process of the people that are looking. At the information and who have spent time with the students to help place them. And I guess I am bristling at the idea that there's preferential, meaning there are, there's the place to be and there's the place not to be.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move on to the rest of Dr. Dora's update?
Just just a comment more of a probably a secondary level. But I just think that the teacher recommendation is so much in play with the. Performance or lack of performance from going to the next level, such as a math level or. A going from an honors to possibly an AP level and things of that nature. I just think teacher recommendation is the most important thing within the process. Now, obviously, parents can be involved with that process, kids can be involved with that process. But if I'm teaching on a daily basis, I should have a pretty good idea where you're going. To get success. So I, I, I know you mentioned administrators looking at it. I appreciate that because I'm sure administrators look at it from a numbers game. Because we may have to have another section of of honors history or something of that nature. So I understand where that comes in. But to me, the most important thing is the teacher recommendation.
Thank you. Terry?
Also involved in that. Equation or formula is certain teachers are only allowed to have so many IEP cases in a class. So you may have to take, you may have to make arrangements for that, which it also you shouldn't be publishing that. But anyway, I really think this should come to the policy committee so we can look at all the legal parts, the IEP parts and all that. I think it's a good thing to bring to our committee.
I agree. Any other questions or comments for this particular piece of Dr. Dora's update?
Continue. Okay, just wanted to say that we're beginning our pre-k screening. So November 5th is our first one. Also, just to add in, it's time to be thinking, believe it or not, even for next year, you know, kindergarten. We can start registrations early. And so I just encourage everyone to start thinking about the following year. Knowing the the pre-k and kindergarten numbers early certainly helps us with staffing needs for the following year. This Saturday, I'll just reiterate. The junior workday, this, we're back. It's, you know, we talked about the things that are great to have back. We were unable to have junior workday. Before because we weren't having students go out to home. So. Students go out and do light yard work. You can request two students for two hours or four students for four hours. But if you want to contact Courtney Lima or Lynn Campbell. At the high school, they are coordinating the workday. So I encourage people to have kids come back out. It's fun. It's fun to see kids. Join, you know, and getting to do the things that that they've done in the past.
I've already hired.
So am I.
And the next two coffee hours with the superintendent are scheduled for November 2nd at nine o'clock and December 14th at nine o'clock. And then one last update, if I may. Today, Commissioner Riley announced that the state's mask mandate. Has been extended to at least January 15. For this four years. So. We will still be under wearing masks.
Oh, sorry, mine are quick. So one can, is this a coffee hour out on social media? Has it been up on the Facebook so we can share it? I would love to feel, I saw the image and I was trying to take a screenshot so I could share it.
We we do put it up. I'm not sure if it's, it's been up.
And then I wanted to give another update because I do think it's important that we recognize that. Things are getting back to normal. So the juniors are actually having their prom. I wasn't asking, you know, blind. So junior prom, which should have been in the spring, but we couldn't do it, is next Saturday. Thank you for that clarification because I was like, why so early?
Why are we putting her on the spot? What is happening? I'm so.
I know it is. I I realized after that. Yeah, so the juniors are, you know, are now current seniors are are so excited that they're, it's going to be at the Kuna Masit Farm. So it'll be outside, so they can be unmasked, I'm assuming, unmasked, because they're outside, they're outside. And and they get to have a little piece of normal that they would have missed. Leah, with the mask mandate, the 80% for, is that still?
Yes, that's still in place.
In place. So that started October 15?
Yes.
Okay. And is that 80% per building, per district?
Per building.
Per building.
It's staff and students that are eligible.
So it's 80% for staff and students, not 80% for, we're looking at just 80% of the humans in the building. Thank you.
Yes, and we're not there yet. My understanding, there's been about 20 schools across the Commonwealth that has met it. Applied for that waiver to.
I Googled that before this meeting because I had, it's interested in, just so that we don't feel so bad. Hoptington was the first district and I forgot where the other one was, but they're they're still not. Letting loose of the mask. They're keeping it, but so. I mean, and I think if you ask the kids, would you rather keep it safe and keep together and everything, they'd probably say, yeah. You know, so I guess.
It's just a celebration of having it. Yes, having the 80%. I mean, that's kind of the exciting piece. That would be awesome. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is routine business approved minutes of October 12th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Make a motion, Melissa, and second. One second, Lisa. It'll be a roll. Oh, no, I shouldn't. Okay, our roll calls out Andrea.
Andrea Tharold, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
Sherry Medias, yes.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Welch, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Liam Palmer, yes.
And Natalie Calhoun, this is also a guest. So those meetings are through. Committee member reports. Any reports to share? Well, just negotiations, I feel like we should. So the, we had the MOA vote tonight, but since the MOA had wrapped up with meetings, we started the CBA. Meetings with the negotiations team and and at the end, we had one meeting and. That's it. I have nothing else, but just so you know that that's going on. Thank you. Any other committee member, personally, I think just to go to what Kelly was saying, that we had our first equity. Subcommittee meeting. I'm not sure, goal meeting, goal two. And we did kind of decide on the first steps, so I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to share. Yeah, in December, our December meeting, we're going to have that, yeah, an agenda item related to our goals. That's great. Any other committee member reports? Budget and budget met today. Budget, budget subcommittee had our first meeting today as well. Okay, thank you. Nothing really to report on that. Patrick's not panicking yet.
Smiling, that's good. No draw. Request for information.
Any requests for information? I had asked about, I'm just curious about looking at. Any other requests for information? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
And a second.
A second.
Excellent. The second's roll call. Andrea.
Andrea Tharold, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Yes.
Sherry Medias, yes.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Welch, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Liam Palmer, yes.
The worker, yes.
And Natalie is, yes. Thank you very much. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.